Judge, I think we're ready.
We're ready.
Okay. Okay, the Brazos County Commissioner will meet in workshop session as follows. October 28th, 10:00 a.m., Commissioner's courtroom, County Administration Building, to our South Texas Avenue, week 106. First item is called order. The second is the discussion by the Commissioners Court of the following illustrative plan and public comments concerning it. And then two is the plan and amendments as appropriate to develop a plan for future adoption. Sid, you want to?
Does that mean you're all going to blame it on me? Just want to get the lay of the ground. At the last work session, you started from one of our draft plans and came up with the plan that's on the screen now, which we are calling illustrative plan one. And that's the plan that you put out for public comments. So all the public comments you got yesterday relate to this plan. And we're here today to look at that plan and consider any changes you want to make to it, hopefully agreeing on a plan that you will be ready to adopt at your next meeting. So would anybody like to see more detail than that? Josh is on the phone and zoom in on any parts of it you're interested in.
I'd just like to say, I think this is a fair and equitable plan. It pretty evenly distributes the population and it follows natural street lines. That makes the most sense to me, so I'm very happy with this plan.
Yeah, I agree. I thought it was a, I mean, it gets us within the tolerance that we have to be in, you know, and I really, I've heard very few, I mean, there were a few folks that spoke yesterday, and one talked about trying to align with the zip code out there, but I'll tell you that, I mean, I'm one of those that has a zip code of College Station address out there in the ETJ of Bryan. City of Bryan sent out a letter in January of this year that said that they had talked with the post office and got an agreement that your address could change to Bryan if you chose to. And everybody that builds out there and all the development that's going out there now will have a Bryan address rather than a College Station address. So they have addressed that issue. The post office and City of Bryan addressed that issue. Everybody that's on the Highway 30 side, on the ETJ and City of Bryan now can have a Bryan address rather than a College Station address. So I think that issue's already been taken care of. You know, we have had, you know, I mean, we looked at it, and I think population-wise, we are, we're in compliance. So I'm, I'm fine with what we've come up with.
Sid, when we get to this point in the conversation, I do have a small change that I'd like to make out in that area that we're discussing. But I do agree with the judge that using the 77845 does not, there's too much area out there that that, that change would affect. So I've got a couple of changes I want to offer when the appropriate time comes.
Sid, I'd like to comment on the comments that were made on yesterday. Most of those that spoke were speaking to us being fair and equitable and within the law. And I think you've done that in every drawing that you've shown. You've attempted that, and I want to thank you. It's been a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you.
I got a couple of items I wanted to address relative to precinct one and what we have in the illustrative plan relative to public input that we got. It was not spoken, but it was submitted to all of us in writing. And so if we're at the point where we need to kick that off, then I'm ready to go. If not, then I'll wait until the appropriate time.
Well, this is work sessions withdrawing, so...
This is the midtown.
Okay. Well, let me start just by, and after visiting with people in the, in precinct one about the plan that we came up with, the first thing was is the developers of Southern Point, and this is kind of a neutral deal as far as the numbers go, because it has zero census in it. But the Southern Point, they had expressed and expressed to us that they would desire for that to stay in precinct one. And I understand that there's a lot of future growth there, and we're trying to address that. I'm the one that brought that up as a question of where we want to do. But I think if you take a look at what's happened with the changes in precinct three and with the growth and development that's happening within the, well, what the City of College Station calls Midtown and their development, there's a lot of population growth that will be happening there. And I also think that it's possible that precinct three was probably undercounted because April 1st, all of the student population, particularly that in North Gate, where you had a whole lot of, you know, high-rise development and stuff like that, I don't think that those people who should have been counted at April 1st were there, and I don't think that they really said that that was it. But, so the, the main thing was is the Southern Point to address the concerns of the Southern Point developer. And then I also think that it's more logical and I think easier to communicate that we look at 2818 to be the boundary between precinct one and precinct three and out to where it continues out to Easternwood Airport for precinct four. And I'd like to look at the, what things would look like if we took the part that was Southwood Valley, the part that's to the furthest east along, and then move that part, move that boundary from what looks like, I think, Deacon up to 2818. There's a pretty, there's a lot of population there. But then the other two areas out there, both east of and west of 2154 that come down that are contiguous to precinct four right now, if those were to be included in either precinct three or precinct four. Precinct four in this plan is still the furthest away, underpopulated relative to ideal. So, but I, but I think it would just make more sense and easier to communicate and still address all the equitable issues. Don't have any problems with that. But those are the two things that, really, three things. Southern Point, the area below 2818 that is aligned with Texas Avenue and moving that boundary up there and either to offset that population with the two further west parts of precinct one that are north of 2818 and having those go to precinct three or precinct four, whichever the will of the court would be.
Okay, what we're going to need to do, I think, is zoom in on those pieces, and I apologize for not being as familiar with your roadmap as you are.
Oh, no, that's, that's, I appreciate that.
So if you will help guide Josh to the area you're interested in, he can zoom in and we can look at that in detail.
So I think I found 2818. Is that the road I heard here?
Yes, if you go over to Texas Avenue and if you zoom in right there, go a little, okay, in the center of the map, that area that comes below of precinct three, that comes below, it's actually the subdivision is Southwood Valley. That part right there, the yellow part that goes below 2818 is a part of precinct three. Yes, sir, that one right there where you had your arrow.
We're looking at all of this area.
Yes.
We have roughly a population of about 2,200 people here, if I can get everything selected.
Okay. And that, and then offsetting that with the two areas of precinct one that are further to the west and north of 2818. Yes, sir, those, those two parts right there. 2818 is the part that comes down below, where, actually, right where the number one is for precinct one.
We're looking at this area just north of it in precinct one?
Yes, sir. That's, that's currently in precinct one.
Okay.
And having, and looking at the population of that one as an offset. I just think it's a more logical boundary that's, that we can communicate to the, to the public where the boundaries between four and three and one are.
Yeah, we can most certainly take a look at that. Let me select this area. And we're talking about putting this area of one into either four or three?
Yeah. You know, splitting it between four and three might make some sense because four is the furthest, I mean, from, from looking at the census demographics, four is the, is still the lower populated of the four precincts relative to our high and lows.
Let me put all this into four. It looks like four's boundary comes right through here anyways. It looks like that will line up pretty well. And let's just see what that does. So this is, I'm just realizing, that's 8,700 people, and the difference is, so you're right, maybe splitting it would be better. But just to see real quick, I'm going to put this into four. See what that does to our numbers here. Yeah, so that does jump us up a lot. So I'm going to undo that.
I'd like to know what the demographics are.
And I'm going to split it as you were mentioning.
Yeah, no, in Commissioner Colley, I really, I really do, this is looking just from a big picture perspective, but I do want to address all of the equitable and demographics.
Oh, we certainly will. We certainly shall.
Okay. So I now just took half of that area. We've got about 5,000 people in the count. And let me see what it does to demographics in the population, just assigning this portion of it to four. Assigning the selected, it just went through. So population-wise, we're okay. We're still under 10%. And let me undo that again, get a kind of feel for the demographics. And what I can do is just take a screenshot of what it is right now so we can, with my memory, it's easier to overlay. I'll just take this whole area. So I'm going to undo that change.
You got a lot of geographic information systems.
Okay, so now we're back to our original plan here, our illustrative plan. And here is a screenshot of what the change looked like. So I'm going to go through, we did this change between, was that three and four? I know it's four. So our deviation went from minus 478 to plus, so we kind of just swapped down from being under 2,700 people to being over roughly 2,500. Looking at our demographics here, we went from 17.9% to 16.9. So we definitely lost some there in the Hispanic population. Same situation, we lost about a percent. And the overall minority went down by about 2.5% roughly from 72.94 to 70.51.
Sid, I can't agree with that.
Well, and then, well, with the offset as far as that goes, if we were to pick up, now, does that include the, also the swap that we had in the Southwood Valley area?
It did not. So let me keep this in for now. Oh, I took it out, so let me re-put it back in.
To my honorable colleague.
Yes.
I will not accept the demographics for that proposal. I can't support it. The purpose of precinct four would be diluted in the power of my constituents. It's not in the best interest to do that. It might look good, but it doesn't work for me.
Okay, this is now the change with the area we decided over here to take out of three and put back into one. And I also have the change here. So let me take a screenshot of this.
Okay, so what if we were to put that area that we're currently thinking about in four into three, and that would keep the, it would be more contiguous with the border between the two precincts being 2818?
This area right here?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And, and actually, the area.
This area here as well?
Well, let's just start a piece at a time. What would, what would it look like right there? Because I think you'd say like 8,600 was the population of the total area south of...
Of both of them?
Yeah, north of 2818, so.
Okay, and does this look like what you were describing to me? We got this area in three, this part we put the four, and then this area that was in three is now in one. So everything south of 2818 is in one. And I can take, we are over on the deviation. But it's not by a ton, but if you'd like, I can do another screenshot of this and compare it back to the illustrative plan if you'd like. I'm going to, I'm going to undo these changes. I got that screenshot now. I'm going to go back to our IP plan, illustrative plan. I believe this was right here. So these are our numbers that we have for illustrative plan. And with all the changes put in, this is what are the differences, so. And even though this was over our, our overall plan deviation, I think it was, remember, right around 11%. But just to go over the individual numbers. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that. Was someone giving me direction?
Is it on?
It's on.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can barely hear Sid, but everyone else is coming in loud and clear.
Here, take mine.
Yep, I can hear, I can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, perfectly.
Go to the southernmost part of three, over on the right side there, that area just to the left of your cursor, and put that into one, just to see what that looks like.
Okay, this area is now going into one, and our plan deviation is 11.9%.
One of the problems in that area, Commissioners, is that there are, is a very dense, densely populated area.
Yes, it is.
And so if you move anything resembling a substantial portion of a precinct around, it takes the plan out of balance. The ripple effect of that is that you end up having to make changes elsewhere that you may not want to make.
If we were to offset that, not to precinct four, but to precinct three for the other piece that was, I mean, to me, it makes sense, that area that's divided by 2154, Welburn Road, and that might be a better...
So the stuff he's got highlighted, is that what you have in mind?
Yes.
Okay, put that in three.
Okay, this is going into three. And population-wise, it did offset. We are down now to 6.92%.
Yeah, that's the lowest, that's the closest to ideal we've come yet. And I don't think that changed significantly, the demographic.
It doesn't change.
No, it's, it's, it's pretty much an equal offset demographics-wise between the Southwood Valley area and that. I would, personally, I would prefer that because I think it's easier to communicate and for people, and it gets us closer to ideal as well. That's not a problem for the precinct three, Commissioner.
No, I don't have a problem with that. But Southern Point's going to see a lot of growth.
Pardon me?
Southern Point's going to see a lot of growth in the next decade.
Yes, and I'm, and I'm really just trying to address, I mean, and so is, I think, Midtown, but I do think that, you know, I want to address the concerns that were expressed by the developer of Southern Point with his comments, with his public input.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so in considering the next suggestion or two or three, do you want to start from this point, or do you want to go back to the plan as originally shown today? Is everybody okay with this change?
Yeah, well, let's, let's be sure that we've got the Southern Point, like you said, it was a zero current census population, but just through, working from that point forward, I'd like to address the Southern Point.
And where is that?
Request by the developers of Southern Point. That is down...
Want to zoom out?
Yeah, it's down right there by Peach Creek. Okay, it's that piece that's just underneath the current precinct one, precinct three boundary to the south. That one, just a little bit to your right there, yes, sir, that one right there. That is Southern Point.
Okay, it looks like this whole area here is one precinct block, and you're correct, the population we have is zero.
So you want that put into...
Yes, that was a request of, that we got in our public hearing from the, they weren't, they, the person who entered those comments was not here, but they did submit in writing that request on their part.
Is everybody okay with that change?
Yeah, that's okay.
From a census perspective, it has zero net effect.
Okay, go ahead and, go ahead and put...
One.
No, into one.
Okay.
It remains that current boundary line, which actually is geographically Lick Creek, that all stays the same.
Yep.
Thank you. That, that's everything, and then further down, I have one other question I want us to address, but thank you.
From three back to one.
But where we, we're at six point, is that eight-two or nine-two?
Comes into here.
Nine-two, okay.
And let me just add, so that everybody's clear, you don't get bonus points for getting closer to zero. As long as you're under 10, you're okay.
And I understand.
It has got to meet the law.
I'll, I'll give you bonus points.
The bar is, but, but, okay, I get it, the bar is 10, but if we can get beyond 10, then we don't get any bonus points.
No bonus points.
Think limbo and how hard you're going to hurt your back.
I have a problem if we get higher than 10.
Yeah.
Mr. Ford?
I'm ready.
Remember, we're keeping or trying to make sure that it's one vote.
One person.
One person. It's not that it looks good, but it's equal, equitable.
Yes. Well, I mean, were there any, with, with the changes we've made there, were there any substantive changes in demographics that we need to go back and look at and address?
No, because it's zero now.
If you didn't change precinct four, but we're okay.
Sid, to address some of the changes, excuse me, the comments that we had yesterday, but also to take into account what the judge talked about, because he lives out in that area, I've got a proposal, not that we take all of the 77845 addresses, but it appears that the census blocks follow Mathis Creek, sort of from the Bryan city limits down to the river. And I've got a couple of census blocks that I'd like to give you out in the area of Highway 30, 158 and 30. Block 1021, 1020, 3,011, 3,010, 3,014, 3,015, 3,021, 3,020. Now, I've already said that. No, 3,020. And then 3,018, 3,023. That's a very low net effect as far as population. I know we're not trying to hit the numbers right on the money, but it, it does address several of the questions. One of them, I think, was a citizen that lived on Coal Lane that had a comment, and then, of course, Rudy Schultz had a comment on it also. So I'd like to look at those, please.
Okay, and this is, correct me if I'm wrong, we said State Highway 30 right here?
Yes. Generally, what I'm talking about is including Mathis Creek in, and to the west of that in Commissioner precinct three.
Okay, I'm trying to find...
Josh, this is, this is that strip of census blocks we looked at last week. Now, go, pan to the, so we see more of the right side, and go right above the highway in precinct two. There's a strip of blocks along that current boundary. That's what Commissioner Ford's talking about, I believe.
Okay, let me turn on the blocks here, though, it should help a lot. And I believe this is the creek here. The census block does go through it.
That one it does. Just, just to the south of that, it follows the creek, I think.
Okay, and we're speaking of these areas right here, I believe, and going, continuing south here along the border?
Yes.
There we go.
Is that all of them, Commissioner?
I believe that's it.
All right, I'm trying to see the census block, just so I can double-check here. So here is all the information in this block. Let's see here. Was it block 3015? Was that one of them?
No, it is not. Uh, no, it is 3015, yes, but that's population zero.
Okay, perfect. I just need to make sure I get the label correctly. So I'm going to label all the census blocks here. Block 20. There we go. Okay, so 315 I got selected, 318, 320, 321.
314 and 3, excuse me, 3,010.
Okay, let me add those. Here's 314, there's 310. I'm assuming I'm going to add in 311, just to square this up in 9016?
Right, you got 1021 and 1020 also.
Yes, precinct...
No, 1020 is north of that.
Again, 1020 is a population of zero, but it just makes sense.
So that, the boundary on the top of that is Elmo Weeden?
Yep, yep.
Commissioner, it looks like ten twenty is to the west of the road there.
Yeah.
And ten twenty-one, did you want both of those as well?
I'd like to put both of those in the consideration, please. That basically takes University Drive and the Bryan city limit, leaves that in two, it takes this, this area just to the east of Highway thirty and adds that to three.
I'll put this into three and see what our numbers look like. We only have a population of eight hundred and nine people, so it shouldn't be too drastic. Assigning that now, our deviation went to seven point six seven?
Yeah, I don't want that. Highway thirty makes the most sense, adding that area does not. It also would eliminate a political challenger to Commissioner Ford, which I think is wrong.
Commissioner, what I'm going to tell you is, in our, in our precincts, you can, you can move to another precinct if you wanted to run into, you could rent property in that precinct and still be fully within the law to run into you. We can't, we can't totally disregard the comments that we got yesterday, just because it might put one person in a different precinct, they can move.
Well, anybody can move, but that's not the point. The point is that this is a particular gerrymander to eliminate a competitor, and that's wrong.
Not in any way. It's addressing the comments that we got yesterday, and I believe this makes more sense with the, the population, how it would fit into three and, and leave two generally the same as it is now.
Well, I, I do not want this geographic area.
Well, and Highway thirty does make the logical.
Sense.
That is the ETJ of College Station, and City of Bryan is on the other side, it's a major highway. I mean, and I will tell you, twenty years ago, I asked for that to happen, and it didn't. Ten years ago, when we went through it, instead of coming precinct three, there used to be precinct three, some of that out there.
Right.
And they shifted over to Carter Creek, which is another line, it's the CSISD and BISD line. But, but Highway thirty really is the logical place for, for that line to be, because it's City of Bryan, College Station, if College Station comes out and, and annexes in the future, then they can only annex up to Highway thirty. Bryan has already annexed a strip through there, and they can go all the way to the river. I mean, to me, that's the logical place to put a line, and it's a defined line that everybody that drives out there would know that, you know, precinct three is on one side, precinct two is on the other side. I mean, to me, that's just a, that, that, that looks the, the most logical spot to me, you know, and not try to draw in, you know, a creek as the line.
I respectfully disagree.
Is that, is that all the changes that everybody wants to look at?
That I wanted to consider.
I don't, I don't want that additional area in three.
No, I understand that you don't like that, I'm just asking, were there any other things we wanted to look at, or are we in the place where the only issue is this area here?
I mean, I, I was happy with the other, I'm happy with the changes that Steve made, as long as Nancy is okay with it going to.
I'm okay with it.
And so, I guess, as far as I know, this is the only issue we got.
Right.
Unless somebody else has got a, an issue.
We'll have one more bigger picture question, but I've just already about that that I think we need to address, but. The one benefit of this is it does make more of a rural urban perspective for precinct three, which we've done, but with the Highway thirty boundary and extending out along the, it's a Fitch annexation that College Station has out there, I know Bryan has an annexation that comes out the line right there. So.
Can you talk push, because the mic, the audience can't hear you?
The other issue that I wanted to address is.
Steve's speaking to me.
The other issue I wanted to address, we can still wait on that, because it's not, it's not about this.
Well, at this point, I don't have anything to add, and you need to get your arm wrestling joints limbered up and decide which way you want to go on this last change.
Well, I've spoken my mind, I am not in favor of this. I think Highway thirty makes the most sense, and to leave that as the boundary.
Yeah, I agree. I think Highway thirty is the logical way to split Highway, I mean, precinct three and two, I mean, it's, you know, it's College Station, Bryan, and it's, it's a logical way to draw the boundary, so I'd be in support of the first proposal.
I believe that the next meeting is the one that's scheduled for actual adoption, and so if you don't fight it out today, you'll have to fight it out at the adoption meeting, it's your pleasure.
Well, I think we ought to fight it out now.
But you need a decision on this, one way or the other, before then.
When we post it, we post what we believe to be the final.
So, let me ask, mister, tell me what the reason would be that you would need to stick that area over there into three?
We, we talked about it yesterday, and a part of it is, is that the voting precinct twenty-seven is a huge boundary, and it's already over numbers?
No, it's not.
No, it wasn't over, but.
Number is five thousand, and it's got four thousand, so it's, it's twenty percent.
It's close. In addition, Judge, I don't think there's going to be any particularly new growth as far as subdivisions in this area, I think there will be out to the east of there where I'm, where I'm talking about. I feel like that the neighborhoods, if you will, along thirty there, just to the east, are truly neighborhoods, you know, there's not, there's not much country, there's not much open land in that area, it's all like one, one acre lots in that area. I think it's a perfect fit for three, I think it fits the demographics of three, I think it fits the mindset of three. I understand that the College Station addresses can change, but I think most of those people in that area consider themselves to be in College Station addresses, as one of the citizens stated yesterday, they'd like to be in precinct three, so I'm, I'm willing to accommodate that. Also, feel like that the area down to the river is, is just a, you know, a small, a small area. If, if the commissioner has a problem going down to the, the river on the east side of thirty, I certainly would take that under consideration, but these, these areas up in here also give Commissioner in precinct three a little bit more county roads, which we've discussed in the past, that we.
They're picking up some county roads south of thirty.
Right, I agree, Commissioner, but what I'm going to tell you is, eighty, eighty to ninety percent of the county roads in the county are in, in two already, so if we give you a couple of more county roads, I can't see how that's a huge hardship.
Well, and, and we did try to address that, but as far as the, one of the concerns, and you just mentioned while ago, was the population in precinct twenty-seven, voter precinct twenty-seven, and it wasn't above, it was a, memory serves me right, it was like forty-five hundred, so it was below the five thousand. By moving Deerfield and, and that area that's on the whichever side of Highway thirty, the College Station side, that reduced voter precinct twenty-seven by about a thousand twelve hundred people, so it already brought it down to about thirty-five hundred in the population, so we're well within, well within, you know, the voter precinct population, well below the five thousand out there, so I, you know.
Judge, I feel, I feel like that what I'm asking here addresses a number of the comments that we had yesterday, and I'd like to, I'd like to at least continue to have this, this change considered.
Well, we're going to have to make a decision pretty quick.
Okay.
It's got to, you know.
I'm, I'm always willing to negotiate, Judge, I don't want to be, how do you say, not, not willing to talk about it, but I, I feel very strongly about this, and I think Sid would tell you, when I asked about including the area down around Talkaway Lakes, initially, this was what, what I'd asked for, it just didn't, it didn't come out in our previous hearing, because the, I was, I thought I was waiting for my, for my time to talk, and it never seemed to happen, so this is my opportunity to, to basically tell the court what I, what I wanted from day one, what I'd asked for from day one.
Well, I guess I respectfully disagree.
I disagree as well.
Me, and, so.
I understand.
Can we take a?
Straw poll.
Straw poll on whether we want to keep it on thirty or add the, what Russ wants?
I don't know, I don't want to be taking a vote when we're not supposed to be taking a vote, so I'm a little reluctant to.
Well, I mean, if we're going to, just to.
I know we need to say.
Have to make a decision.
We need to make a decision.
I would prefer, well, I don't think we can say this without a straw poll, I would prefer that within all of this, we have consensus where we can go to the residents of Brassus County and say, we're all on board with this.
That may not help. But we could always say the majority.
Yeah. Do you feel that thirty is the logical split point, Ms. Colley? No comment?
No, I'm, I'm not in that fight, I'm pleased that four is intact, and the integrity, the reason that we even formed four is still strong, so I'll let you two duke it out.
Well, I don't think it should be in three, I'll just say that, and thirty is the logical place for it to be split, and I think this is real gerrymandering, in the worst way.
Commissioner, we've worked all over the county to try to make sure that we did square up some lines, and I think exactly what we've done, particularly to the west of thirty, does, I, I, I think previously that these precincts had intentionally, appear to have intentionally given precinct two more county roads than any other precinct. Currently, if we stayed with the plan that we have now, I believe precinct three has zero or no county roads whatsoever.
That's correct.
So, my, my point of all of this is, this, this evens things up, this, this makes the county make sense. I understand that the Highway thirty line is your preference, Mathis Creek is mine.
I hate to keep restating, but I still think that Highway thirty looks like the most logical line to use, it is the ETJ of College Station and the City of Bryan, and, I mean, it, it squares up as well as anything, squares up, in my opinion, a lot better than, you know, drawing it down a creek.
The census, the census voting blocks are what we have to consider, though, in all fairness, Judge, I mean, it's, that's what I'm talking about, is the census, the census, not voting block, the census blocks, enumeration blocks.
Did you want to answer to your earlier question?
Yes.
So, Mr. Bob Gregman, if you do have the ability to make a straw poll, do you actually have the ability to make, to officially on this plan also adopt it?
So, so that this workshop has a recommendation to the Commissioner's Court next week, on the final plat, final plan?
Well, I mean, it, after an executive session, it says, consider possible action on the executive session, and I think, oh, maybe that's not, potential conflict litigation or settlement, so that's a different deal. I mean, if, if counsel thinks that we can approve one or the other of the plans, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that, I just don't want us to get into any issue of voting on something when we shouldn't be, that's, that's my only.
So, the council says we can vote?
Well, I don't know.
And we need to?
Yeah.
I mean, I.
Counsel says, counsel just said, said we can, we can take a straw poll.
I think I'm in the same vein you're in.
Yep.
So, just so we're clear, you're not, you're not usurping next Tuesday's?
We're not adopting, we're just giving, we're just giving direction to, for our agenda for next week.
Exactly, we're going to make a recommendation on Tuesday.
We're going to vote on Tuesday.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to vote from the recommendations we have here.
Right, yeah.
And if we can agree, we'll walk away today.
With a map.
With a map.
Yep.
It's real simple.
Yep.
If you, if you don't want to do that today, then we can have both plans on defended next week, and you can choose which one to adopt.
A certain thing I need.
I mean, I think I'd rather today.
Yeah.
I agree, Judge, I think that's.
I think we need to.
Yeah, let's, let's decide something.
So, I guess, do we need a motion? Do we, how do we, how do we handle that? To, to come to?
I move that we approve Plan One as presented before today, the plan before we did the, the swap on one and three.
With, with the line on thirty.
With the line on thirty.
So, is that okay? Do we do that that way?
I don't, I don't think you vote to adopt it, I think the most.
No, no, the plan to.
Propose the adoption of that plan on Tuesday.
I'm moving to propose that we put this on the agenda next week as a final plan.
Which, just to be clear, which plan are we talking about?
The one that was presented first, before we did the swap on two.
With Highway thirty being the division.
But there were other changes made.
Yeah.
And this is the only change that you're tentatively not designating.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think everything else was kind of, it seemed like consensus that everybody was okay with the other changes, this is the only one, the Highway thirty, or I'm not sure that that's Mathis Creek, I know I've heard you say that, I don't think it is, I think it's brushy, but, but that's the, that's the only one that has been a little contentious, and so.
I think we should have Josh put what said, and I think is the current proposed plan up.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Because there were some other areas that we made some. We tested out.
Okay.
And just to be clear, I'm, I'm, for labeling purposes, the result, I'm going to call illustrative Plan Two.
Okay.
Just so we are all on the same page, no one As and Bs.
Yeah.
And to be clear, what we're going to do to create illustrative Plan Two is keep all of the changes except this last one.
Correct.
Along Highway thirty.
Correct.
Okay, so Josh, I need for you to take back out, there you go, and the other changes that were made are still there.
Yeah.
Okay, if you guys don't mind, give me one second while I name this illustrative Plan Two.
Just take, while he's doing that, take a look and make sure the other changes that are there.
Yes, the other changes we have are the zero population here that was moved back into one.
This comes to me.
And we put this area back into three, that was in one, and we took this area from four into one, so it's kind of the reverse.
Actually, I think that was not in four, I think that was in one, and it stayed.
No, it had been in one, but that's okay.
Is that right?
And, and as it. Okay, and as this shows, this will be illustrative Plan. Okay, and as this shows, this will be illustrative Plan 2.
Be sure that the numbers.
Yeah.
Those are the numbers you're talking about.
Demographic.
You're unchanged.
I hear we wanted to look at the numbers on the, this between illustrative Plan 1 and 2?
No, I think we're good, Josh. We're just making sure that the numbers on display right now look right. And the deviation is 6.92, and that's the plan I remember, the deviation I remember before we talked about this last set of changes.
Yeah.
So that's the 1.
Okay, I'm naming this illustrative Plan 2. Give me one minute.
Okay, so are we, we've got a motion. Did I give it a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion is second to.
To move this plan forward.
To a vote for next Tuesday.
I'm sorry, who made the second?
I didn't hear.
Did you make a second?
I did not.
I'll second it. Okay, so we got a motion as second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Okay, so it passes 4 to 1. We'll move this plan forward.
Do we consider now the changes along 30, or does this preclude considering those changes?
This, this was.
This is the, this is the plan.
Well, technically, you can fight again.
I mean, we haven't, it's not final until we vote.
Do we vote on it on Tuesday?
Pushed it forward so we could.
Yeah, this will be on the agenda on Tuesday.
Does it make sense for us to have, since we have made some changes, another public input session?
We've got time to.
I don't think you have time to do that.
If you had another public input session, you'd have to have another, you have to have another. Draw sessions, and our hard deadline is November 12th.
I thought it was, I thought it's the 29th now, since the legislature was behind on.
That bill, it's complicated. That bill did not change the county deadline for, which is the beginning of candidate signup. It shifted the candidate signup period to a two-week period, starting then, for one of the state plans.
Okay, well, that was one of the things that was mentioned.
I think at one of the TAC conferences that they were talking about the 29th being the deadline,
but we're, but you're saying it's still on the 12th?
Yes, sir.
Of November?
Yes, sir.
And we've been trying to follow that schedule.
And I'd also say that if you wait until the end of November, there will not be sufficient time to reconfigure the election precincts before those deadlines start to kick in.
One, one last thing before we moved on, I did want to address, and that was the, what we want to do about having our justice precincts being contiguous with our commissioner precincts. And I understand that the, from visiting with Sid, the only, the only real exception, I think, that we have to that is we have Precinct 3 justice precinct where it covers jurisdictionally the entirety of the campus. And do we need to address that? I can just tell you that in conversations with Constable 1 and JP 1, that they would like for the Commissioner's precinct and the JP and Constable precinct to be contiguous.
That's not, I don't think that's necessary by law.
Well, I know it's not necessary by law. I just wanted to address a preference.
Josh, can.
It's a grammar thing, but actually, the word I think you're looking for is coterminous. Contiguous means next to each other. Coterminous means that the.
My apologies.
Josh, do you have a shape file for the JP plan, the current plan?
Coterminous. Sorry about that.
Yes, because that's basically the same as our commissioners. So let me load that real quick.
Yeah, and I understand that it's not required by law, but I just wanted to get the input of the precinct 1, Constable, and the JP 1.
If you got a commissioner precinct, whatever, you got a JP Constable saying. That makes sense to me. I'm.
I concur on that. That's exactly the.
Yeah, I mean, with the exception that we want to address for JP 3, Constable 3, because of the.
University.
Yeah, because of the university.
Because JP 3 is really the municipal court of the university. And we want to keep it that way.
So whatever it is that we need to do, if we need to take some type of action to address that, or if they need to take action to address that.
Actually, Josh, what I'm looking for is to superpose the boundaries of the JP precinct on top of the plan we just had.
Okay. If we could do it all in peace, and everybody was agreeable to that.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that if we. And I mean, and like I say, I only have the input from JP 1, Constable 1, certainly.
Do we have to do that at the same time?
We don't have to. We can wait.
So let's get some input from the Constables and the JPs.
Yeah, be glad to.
Of course, if your precinct doesn't change, so.
Yeah, yeah, Judge, when, when we redistricted last time, they put it all in one JP at the request of the UPD, the Police Department.
Yeah.
So they had one Constable and one JP to, to deal with.
And I think that's the direction we would.
Can you thin down the benchmark for the commissioners so that those lines are not dominant, and maybe change the color of the JP lines to red?
Yeah, and they should be the same lines, which is why I'm wondering.
They're not identical.
Okay, so they're not coterminous? So let me.
Thanks, thanks for the coterminous contiguous distinction there.
Identical, many of your words.
Calendars and big words are. Yeah, calendars and big words are sharp objects in my pocket.
That's how lawyers get paid so much, right? We remember all those hard words.
Probably why I'm not a lawyer.
So vocabulary, so vocabulary was part of the curriculum at law school.
Makes it look magic, doesn't it?
Yeah, you know, all those big words.
Okay, so I have the JP lines in black, and let me.
Make them red. Can you make them red?
Yes, I can make them red. Now they are red, and our commissioner lines are also red, I believe, right now. I have them turned off. So let me make those thinner.
You're right, I need them a different color, but I would rather de-emphasize the commissioner lines and bring up the JP lines so they're more visible.
Okay, yeah, and I made the commissioner lines are now black. I'm going to turn them off. That's off, and this is back on, so it looks like, for the most part, they follow the same boundary here.
There's not enough contrast between the commissioner lines and the JP lines.
And if we could have, if we could have this available for the JPs and Constables and for the commissioners to look at what the differences are and have discussions relative to that.
Okay, the biggest difference I see.
Trying to get it where you can see the red on top of the black here. It's just the way this program does it. It wants to change the color by the color of the precincts. You kind of see 1's a little blue, 4's a little bit of this color, and so on with 2 is a little red. And so it does make it a little difficult here. But the, uh, black line should be under the justice of the. A little hard to see on here, but you can, and I think this might be the area you might be about to be talking about, Sid. It's a little bit different here. For the most part, it looks like the boundaries, just turning on and off the commissioner precinct lines. Get a little bit better. But yeah, as far as making a map, we can definitely do that to make it more clear.
Well, I guess. If y'all want to come up with a map that shows the Constable JP remaining the same on that campus area like it has been, but then configuring with the way commissioner lines have been kind of, the direction we're going with commissioner lines, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I, you know.
We can work on making it a little more visibly easier to tell the difference than it is here. It takes some experimenting with the thickness and the colors of the lines.
Okay.
We'll work that up for you.
If you can put some hash marks or something in some of the areas that are potential for change.
Judge, if you wanted to address that today, you could do essentially the same thing with just the commissioner precincts and have a proposal to approve making the JP and Constable precincts coterminous. We could propose Plan 2 commissioner precincts, except that the A&amp;M campus would be to be in Precinct 3, Commissioner for the Constable. Do you think subject to obtaining input from those positions?
Well, I mean, of course, I mean, we all know that the one that's critical is the commissioner precincts, and I think we've kind of settled out on that. I mean, I, I don't know that there's any, I'd, it would be nice if we could get it done and get it all done at one time. I mean, that's what I would like to see, but I don't know that we have to make that decision today. I mean, I think if y'all can work through that map and see where, you know, where the change, where the difference is on campus, which is, I think would be the same as it is today. And then the lines would mirror these lines for commissioners. I mean, and so then we could show the JP and Constables. But to me, it's, it's, it's easier for the public if they know, well, I've got a commissioner precinct 2 or 3 or whichever, and a Constable JP for the same thing, and, and the only difference would be out there.
Okay. Just to make sure I'm clear on what you want. We're going to take illustrative Plan 2 commissioner lines and compare those. Work up a map that makes it easy to see what the current justice precinct lines are in comparison to that. And the other thing I can do for you is draw a revised justice precinct plan that follows illustrative Plan 1, uh, 2 commissioner lines, with the exception of putting the A&amp;M campus and keeping all of it in 3, so that you'll be able to see what that looks like. And put you in a position, if you're happy with what I accidentally draw, you would be in a position to adopt that next week as well.
I think that sounds good.
So co, so the potential for a co, when you said accidentally draw, you're saying the, the potential for a coterminous accidental occurrence?
I was trying not to use that word.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just.
Yeah, but I'll try to produce something that you can thumbs up or thumbs down. And it does not preclude making a last-minute change if you absolutely think you need to. Want to be as flexible as we can.
You know, for the safety of the community, I think we need to not use those longer terms.
I'll, I'll try to behave, Ms. Colley.
I'd like us to be as clear as possible. Remember, the constituents are going to have to understand what we're doing.
So, lines that are identical to the proposed new commissioner lines, except for the campus.
Right.
That's the tab. All right.
That's it, I think.
So we're going to have to do that tomorrow, Josh.
Well, that's what I was going to ask if we.
And I wanted to tell you, too, how much I appreciate the work, because in, uh, just kind of passing conversations with other counties, I think we're way ahead in the game relative to where some of them, I've heard some of them are. So thank you very much for that.
Steve, Brassus County usually is, we are always ahead, and we teach others how to do it right.
Yes, ma'am.
So do we have an executive session that we need to have today, Counselor, or do you? I, I wasn't aware of one either. Okay, all right. That said, then, we'll adjourn. Thank you, everyone, for coming.